You mentioned, Michelle, like now it's time to get to fun stuff. And there's going to be a lot still operational pieces and all those other sides as well. But I'm really looking forward to now having myself a little time to step back and really kind of reflect on where we are as an organization. And kind of analyze some of our challenges and our strengths and start developing a plan as a council and as a staff on how we can really start to meet this moment. I put kind of it's the general title here that Ellsworth's time is now. And that was from a quote from the owner of the Withem Family Hotels at the Chamber of Commerce meeting about why they're investing in Ellsworth with that new big home to suites piece is just because it's Ellsworth's time is now. And there's just so much of that growth we're seeing everywhere. I know when I started this, this journey with you all a year and almost a year and a half ago now, you, somebody asked me like what my plan is, what's my vision and the strategy for the city of Ellsworth? And I said, I have no idea. I would be lying to you if I claimed I had one fully baked out of the, out of the gate. And it's going to take a lot of listening and learning in the organization. I think as some of the news reports reported, there was a lot of operational issues that we had to address and get through. And I think we've largely done that. And I've been fortunate enough, over the last three or four weeks, we've met with the Maine Development Foundation, Ellsworth Business Development Corporation, a couple of other folks where I've kind of been starting to show my vision, or at least what I perceive in working with the staff and our management team. And I've kind of put together a deck on that that I'd love to share with you all. And then we can kind of transition towards how do we make this our deck? I think in terms of outputs for strategic alignment, I think a lot of times strategy sessions kind of fail for a few reasons. One is they're not necessary. It's just a prioritization exercise and not really like strategy for the organization. And two, they don't, they don't get institutionalized. They just kind of seem rote as a process. You kind of move forward on. So to me also having like the output is really important. And for me, the output would be a similar strategy deck to this initial that I've put together that kind of outlines the great vision and amazing opportunities here in Ellsworth. That can be public facing, but that also has like, here's our, here's our priorities for the organization. Here's our, you know, really public facing things that we're committed to doing over the next year or so and two years. And maybe really a five-year outlook I could see based on the comp plan, the business attraction plan. So how do we make, not make this just like another plan, a strategy plan, a really more action? Here's the things that we're going to hold our staff accountable to and in having better council inputs on all these pieces. So with, with that, I think I'll, today I'll try to get through this strategy deck on kind of where I think we're generally at as an organization and where we're going. And then transition a little bit towards what our strategic backlog is that I think we're going to need to address. There's a lot on here, a lot of exciting stuff, which I think will be a good transition to what I'm hoping the biggest piece, which is this work new monthly standing workshop structure, which for those that haven't seen previous meetings, I think starting August 4th, we're going to have the first standing workshops so that we can start previewing kind of a lot of the, the policies and priorities that we're moving forward on and getting more council input at the job. And I should say community input, you know, transparency. If we do have some time today too, I would like to talk a bit about visions and values with the council on, on kind of what we hold here. So that we can have a piece that not just has a big vision and big plans and list of things to do, but actually has a structure to, to really attack them. And then also, you know, a process that we can kind of review the data, review how we're, we're going and have a process moving forward like other cities and towns. Like this is what we set out to do this year. This is what we accomplished. This is what we didn't. Every year we have a new counselor. So come in or three potentially this cycle and we can kind of keep revisiting that, the strategic plan. So this will be definitely a living document. If there's changes, if there's big gaps that we feel like aren't, aren't here, we can obviously keep switching gears. I would like to maybe even make this kind of an agenda item, a standing agenda item for the council workshops just to kind of keep the timing, you know, moving forward and this, this process moving forward. And I think will, will be a good, a good addition there. Any questions before we get started? All right. So first, just a bit of a kind of a look on what's driving growth. I know we did kind of a big, big budget process, but I wanted to start to look into ways to kind of quantify just how unique this moment is. Not everybody knows Ellsworth, but I mean, gosh, with Maine Development Foundation, we're here and those board from all around here, there's a buzz about Ellsworth and, and there's a reason there's a buzz. There's a reason Withem's investing here and other folks are investing here. And one is just explosive regional growth or population growth just in Ellsworth is 37% increase since 2000. That's triple the main rate of 10% growth over the same timeframe and 27% higher than the main rate. It's 10% actually higher than the U, I'm sorry, 17% higher than the US rate of 20% since 2000. So I looked at my own town where I grew up in Mission Viejo, California, and which went from pretty much zero population in the sixties to almost 100,000 when I was growing up there. And they're declining now. And so you, you know, you think about it as cities and towns across this country that are dealing with that sluggish growth or declining growth, but Ellsworth is in a really, especially in rural America, to see this type of population growth is a huge asset for us. Also, obviously, and it's not just the 9,000 people that are here, but the 90,000 across Hancock and Washington County. Huge retail spending because of that with the highest per capita retail spending in the state. A lot of big economic and civic transformations are, are in development. Hundreds of millions of dollars in private and, and public infrastructure investments, whether it's the Home to Suites, the Covota dealership, the $20 million water treatment plan upgrade we're doing. We've got some other things I'll talk about here, but just really big investments, state, national, local level that are really going to be transformative here. Obviously, that gateway to a Kiwi National Park has, has driven a lot of growth here, especially probably in the housing market with that $2 million to $4 million visitor impact. And this last piece on driving growth, or I'd like to be at least one part of it. You know, there's a lot of macroeconomic things that are driving this, but how can we as a city kind of help foster that growth? You know, we're not behind a lot of these macroeconomic trends, but I think we can help streamline and modernize and professionalize in ways that can really help continue to spur this kind of growth cycle. A little bit on kind of interesting demographic notes when I was doing some research and to kind of why Ellsworth is kind of at this moment is a younger age range, actually, which I was kind of surprising, eight years younger than Hancock County. We're at 40 median age and Hancock County is at 49 and younger than the state of Maine as a whole by about four years. And then that kind of 30 to 49 year old is our largest demographic group in the, in the city, which I was pretty surprised about. Actually, well, this table, we're, yeah, about even. The, the, what are you, are you 26 yet, John, or? And then 70% moved in post 2010. Now, I think there's some caveats to this. I want to look into more, you know, would Tabitha be, who went to New York for a while, came back? Like, what is that actual mix? Is it 70% new people? There's a lot of folks that have maybe moved, you know, moved into their home that have, are coming back. You know, what, what is driving a lot of these pieces? It's folks like our new economic development director who just really wanted to be in Maine. And, you know, what's, what is the mix of these new people? It's another piece I really want to start going into. And we looked at this during the, the budget process, but just, you know, huge valuation boost, a $600 million increase in valuation. If Ellsworth was a stock, this is a pretty good bet. It's, I'll beat the market pretty handily. And, and hopefully we're in a similar growth profile moving forward. There's also, I think, you know, from what I can see, the sort of tourism and regional significance seems to be increasing a bit. I didn't know that Hancock County, which Ellsworth is the county seat for, is actually more coastline than the entire state of California. Has more coastline than, than any other county in Maine, but more than California. So we're the county seat here. A lot of this recreational infrastructure is here, whether it's the Sunrise Trail, our, you know, our three enormous lakes, lots of great outdoor assets. And, and we're really just kind of an anchor for this whole, this whole region. That's just incredible. And along with that is some major corporate presences, Walmart, Home Depot, Jackson Lab, really great revitalized commercial corridors on Main Street. There's not a lot of vacancy there. On High Street, there's not a lot of vacancy there. And that, you know, to me, it's very different between Bar Harbor or Castine or other, some of these other places is Ellsworth is that year round. It's not just a tourism kind of seasonal community. It really is an anchor for all kinds of things year round. A little bit of a look back on some of the civic investments we've seen over the last year. We did 20 million in state road projects or the state has, has done over the last year or is in progress on doing. We had the 1.6 million in city road projects to get caught up in some of our city streets. Eight new EV chargers, the Main Street America designation. Thank you to the heart of Ellsworth for all the work they did on that. Some fleet and facilities modernizations, harbor marina, parking lot facilities upgrades, the purchase of the additional land on Branch Lake, the courthouse relocation into the urban growth district, some utility tie-ins, major coal vet repairs on Oak and Water Streets. I believe they've sent out an update on the Oak Street. I know we talked about that last council meeting. The new counters in the city hall and upgraded fire department windows and the Water Street pump station. But it wasn't just kind of like the actual projects, I think, that have really making the difference or setting us up, but some of the capacity building, internal supports that we've done over the last year. One of those is the digitized and more predictable budgeting process. You know, we still got a long ways to go there, but, you know, for the first time ever, we built the budgets in the software. We didn't, last year, we kind of finished the implementation of the budgeting software, but they were still kind of Excel sheets from department heads that we inputted. Now we've actually, every department head have gone through the process of building the budgets in Casell, doing those processes. We have some edits to make to make it even more effective. And also, you know, we had a 2.9% inflationary target, which we met. And going away from this sort of yo-yo budgeting cycle of, you know, 17% one year, 0% one year, 7% to really try to get a little more predictability. Some big operations overhauls, a new deputy city manager, team meeting schedules, all staff meetings, new finance staff policies and procedures, new leadership teams in the front office and public works. A big one, a huge emphasis for me and the team over the last year has been some workforce optimization processes, you know, a performance evaluation system, the strategic hiring processes, and, and a real emphasis on culture and team building, which, you know, to me, it hadn't been really lacking. I was just talking to another executive of a big business here. They're in year three of their leadership development internal program and it's just paying huge dividends for them. If you don't have a culture in your organization of excellence, that's really supportive, cross collaborative, it's really hard to accomplish big goals and we got big goals and big tasks to do ahead. So that, we have some, some new stuff going underway, but we did a ton of work on that over the last year. The library expanded their genealogy service. They've got a congressional directed spending request in for a multimillion dollar building upgrade and expansion. Our emergency medical services were upgraded in the fire department, guaranteeing 24/7 basic life support. And also spring 2025, now we're doing advanced life support and up to the paramedic level. And in our modernized police force, we have a new chief, new three-year union contract, embedded some mental health professionals. They just received another recreditation and they're one of only five agencies in the state of Maine to achieve that. So, so what are some of our work change for 2026 that the, the teams are working on? I think one of the big ones is kind of governance and realignment. We're talking about that monthly council, council workshop where I feel like we can really start to get in the weeds at the right time on these big strategic priorities for the organization and also provide feedback so that our council meetings, hopefully Steve and I'll knock on wood, are a little more time efficient. Or at least to your point, Steve, that we're just, we're giving all these things the space that they need for questions, you know, not just at the council vote level of yes or no, but and for the community input and transparency that they really feel like they're part of the process. And I think part of the strategic planning piece is, is a big public transparency component. Here's what we're committing to for the next year, you know, multi-year. Here's how we're going to track and monitor progress that I hope that will be a big part of. Some ordinance rewrites, which are already in, involved and just better engagement with boards, commissions, how, how that all kind of works together. Community and policy services. We've got a first ever parks and rec department down to the final two candidates. They're both incredible. This is going to be an extraordinarily hard decision. But we, we're also, we're, we're not waiting for the parks and rec director either. You may have seen some upgrades in Knowlton and in Main Street. I know the council, in a new fiscal cycle, so there's additional 50,000 in Knowlton Park this year. We're already putting that to work with, you know, just a lot of the maintenance on that, that area, which has been long overdue. Obviously, the cannabis policy, which we've had a few conversations on, we're getting closer to something new there and expanded pre-K, which I believe is launching in more center in the fall. Keeping our foot in the gas on fiscal and infrastructure planning, the capital improvement reform is going to be coming up at the next council meeting for an approval vendor there. We already proved the road assessments via the street scan. We need to do a little bit better on the reserve account, finance planning, and looking towards this courthouse infrastructure build out where I'll also talk a little more at this finance committee meeting on that. And then some economic development activation, the Union River Center for Innovation, which we talked a bit about previously, activating EBDC a little better into the organization, the TIF redesigns. WS Development, it's the Myrick Street area, Riverwalk ordinance changes, signage upgrades, big things. These are all stuff in the business attraction art plan, other pieces that, you know, have kind of lined dormant for a while. We want to make sure we're putting them on the, on the board to, to move forward. And then looking to kind of FY '27 and beyond, there's some long-term visioning stuff that I feel like is going to be pretty transformative for the city. One of which is the Village Partnership Initiative, which Sarah, the deputy city manager is leading up and she's, has some experience in, in this area that's, you know, potential tens of millions of dollar investment in our Main Street corridor, you know, which will, will obviously be coming to council for more input here. We went through the downtown area with Maine DOT and the consultant Sewell on the project. And, you know, could go, go to things like paying for a Riverwalk, like upgrading the sidewalk area up to Bridge Hill and the, and the gallery, replacing the aging light posts here, doing, redoing all the sidewalks, better, better walkability. A really big project and then tying it into kind of the, the, the bridge replacement for over, over the Union River and making that all kind of seamlessly designed so that it matches the character of Ellsworth, but is providing for better kind of place making here. Then the Thriving Communities Initiative, similar type process. She had a meeting with our economic development director today on their coming in August 14th for a site visit with our federal partners on this effort. So to really start kicking the tires and what's going to happen with the High Street corridor reimagine. So that's a, an enormous, and are there some stretch goals that we want to add to the mix here? You know, 1,500 units by 2030. Housing needs assessment says 1,000. We're, you know, potentially already at 200, 300 units, units there. I know Michelle and I, when we talked earlier, like how big of a focus do we want to make that? You know, can we redesign our TIF districts to really support housing? Do we want to have as a council some overarching kind of goals like that? That aren't just so operational, but that are really kind of target setting for the city and can help, help orient, you know, our general priorities. And then there's, I'm getting more and more worried about AI. I know I'm probably a little bit of an alarmist. Maybe it's because our IT department is so smart, but you know, future-proofing our services or upgrading. You know, we have so many pressures in this organization from a staffing level. We're just drowning in tasks and assignments and these other pieces. Like, how can we use technology to help that? I know a lot of people are thinking of technology as a replacement kind of mechanism and fears of that, but I really feel like, gosh, in an organization that's strapped for resources and time, you know, God, these, some of these things, and we have some of the smartest people I've ever met working in our IT department that know a lot about these things. How can we maybe start using some of these tools to help better resource the organization? And lastly, I'm kind of getting towards a theory of change and sort of organizational maturity. You know, I think in general, over the last year, you know, that one of the issues that I've seen is just kind of outgrowing the systems and structures that, you know, of a smaller town into more of a big city. You see that 37% population growth, it does a pretty big change. And, you know, I think I, I read through, I had this, the manager plan. And why is this managers in Maine? I got these, it's from the Bureau for Municipal Research in Government from, used to be at Bowdoin College. This organization no longer exists. But it kind of just goes through like in 1919, there was one. Auburn was the first city manager, town manager type system. We think of it as like, you know, the Puritans got given right to manage towns like this, but it actually was an invention. It was an innovation in the twenties, thirties and forties that, you know, they kind of felt similarly that they had to do something different. They had to restructure their systems to like meet these, their growing demands.
What are the years on those reports, Charlie?
This is 1961 and this is 1949. They're really, they're really well-written too and have great tables. You always wonder how they like produced this data back then. But yeah, 1920, there's one manager municipality in Maine. By 1961, there's 138. So, but you look at our policies, procedures, ordinances, you can tell like that this was designed in 1949. About two times in a newspaper, no mention of like posting on social media. The grid procurement project or process on opening bit like, but it's all coming digitally through emails. Like, how do we have, how do we create new systems that are, that are in line with the intent of a lot of these things, which is to be transparent, to be accountable, but also to be efficient, you know, so that it, and how do we relook at our systems to create something new? I think one of the things I loved about the meetings when we started talking about, you know, there's been some rumors of, let's do two meetings, but some people hate two meetings. And then this kind of workshop idea with Nancy and Steve and everybody's on like, that could be uniquely Ellsworth on how we start to kind of attack the strategic backlog and make some innovations ourselves that can make this whole process have less sludge, have less time when we come to a council meeting and don't have the right information available. Because we have such an enormous opportunity here that, you know, we got to, going to build a, a system and a structure in the same way that the forbearers here did that really matches this. Have one thing I wanted to, as we do into this process, note here, it's a quote from the Managers in Maine book. It says, "One must admit however, that change in the manner of conducting government business can improve the ability of a municipality to provide what is expected of it in the way of services. The real test is whether a change can achieve what is anticipated by way of more efficient administrative performance without sacrificing those traditional and too often theoretical democratic norms of local self-government." I thought it was really interesting because I, I felt that's like that's biggest little city mains piece. Like, we want to preserve that ability to kind of walk into your city hall or your town hall and know the people who are here. And I think, you know, be able to just, we have so many great locals and there's that idea. We don't want to be a big city and not have it, still have that special feel. And, you know, even words like intentional bureaucratization, just like, we don't want to bureaucratize. But, you know, but you, we kind of need to. I think that is one of the pressures is like, no, no, we don't want to be that. But, you know, that's that back and forth of change, but not too much change. So how do we, how do we go about this process that creates more to me strategic agility in the organization? You know, that we can anticipate, plan, you know, put together, you know, a full year of calendar items that we'd like to consider, but then also modify those as needed and know as an organization that we're meeting goals and benchmarks that are public and accountable and transparent and really build some new capacity in the system so that, you know, because it'll be here a very long time. I know some counselors probably won't be with us soon and the organization will live on. And, you know, at some point I won't be here and Sarah and Ebony, but the city of Ellsworth as an institution will. So how do we institutionalize some of these pieces so that the work we do here can kind of move forward? My, my nephew was at summer camp in Maine for the first time. It was so fun to just kind of talk to him about the chants that still go on and that we're still there. And he probably doesn't know the background and like I created some of the original tennis chants. Like, I know, I know our Anna Kornikova just hit the ball over and like, nobody there probably knows who Anna Kornikova is anymore, but like, you know, we do things in organizations that have long lifespans that really can last and really can make a difference for good and for, sometimes for ill. So looking forward to kind of aligning a bit better. I'd like to really focus today on this kind of workshop structure. And, and that's for August 4th and how we see that proceeding. I've put together kind of a strategic backlog here as well. We as an organization internally are going to a new project management team meeting that's going to be bringing together a lot of our staff leads on a lot of our big products, backlogs items and going into like a tier one, tier two, tier three system for weekly monitoring of progress, how well we're doing on these things, project owners on each piece. But we also want to make sure that they're aligned to kind of council goals. From a, you know, maybe it's from a vision or values perspective, but also has like council input and maybe even some ownership through the workshop structure so that we can know if this is worthwhile. I feel like sometimes there might be a council or a staff member or a community that's kind of like, or myself, that says, we need to move this forward, but, you know, it's not until we actually have the council meeting legally that we can have these like robust discussions on some of these major transformative efforts. So how do we as, as an, as a team, as a council team, kind of attack them strategically, really starting with this workshop piece? So with that, I'll pause. And maybe ask council, is there any questions they have before we go into workshop ideating?
Charlie, I assume we will be working on an Ellsworth chant as part of this?
Sure.
Just keeping notes here.
Mary, I have Ellsworth's time is now. I think we can.
I'll start working on it, I guess.
So at our August meeting, August 4th, you know, we have our first workshop. And I know Steve and Nancy, we kind of had, started that discussion earlier on. What do we want the agenda to be for that workshop? This is kind of one of the pieces that I have struggled with in the council work is I'm, I'm kind of at the nexus of putting these things together and it's kind of like reading the tea leaves. So is, is it the council chair? Who can kind of put that together? Do we design the workshop system so that it's not just a general workshop with three or four items, but so that each counselor has ownership of pieces of the business, which I think could be helpful just from a rules and governments, economic development, parks and recreation, library, schools and public safety, infrastructure and finance? And, you know, they could all be under consideration and there has to be sort of a, you know, a melding of those. Do we want to have, you know, timing limit? I think we've talked, we have an hour and a half at that Ebony or is it two hours? Hour and a half, I think was discussed. Do we want to have time limits for discussion of individual items? Do we want to have a limit to the number of items? Those are my big things that I'm hoping to try to get a little better on so that we can, you know, so it's not so staff-driven on what comes to the council meeting itself. So it's a little bit more council and visible. And I know Steve and I, we, like the four-day municipal work week that we kind of worked in the contract side of with the, and we need to, we'll have to talk about it more in the next council meeting. But, you know, having a process where that could have been a great workshop piece. So I'll leave it for some discussion on, on this kind of new standing workshop.
I think this, I'm, I'm looking at this list and these are more, this isn't really strategic backlog, it's project backlog. So these are different projects within economic development that need to be worked on. But I was, when we're looking at strategy and prioritization, I, I just, I guess I, I wanted to, all this information that you gave us is, is really great information. So more of a discussion on what do we concentrate on right now and over the next few years that helps with the, what's driving growth and using those resources and the demo, the new demographics and kind of making a decision where it is we want to put our efforts. Because we, there's no way that we can do all of these projects. I mean, you can split those up a hundred ways, but I mean, it's, it's too much to concentrate on at once. So in things like, I think some of this is really just you and not as much the council as, you know, when we're talking about enhanced engagement with EBDC, that's, that's not really a council thing. I think that's more of a, a manager type thing is, is, and, and your economic development director to, how, how do you want to use EBDC and, and maybe, you know, the, those conversations? I was kind of hoping, like you and I had at one point, we had a board in your office and we were talking. I was just kind of hoping that the council could start focusing on where and then work from there on to what does that mean and how does that work if this is what we want to do?
We can start there too. I think that we talked in that meeting, yeah, the higher levels of. levels of abstraction with strategy.
Yeah, you know.
This is kind of the lowest level, the, you know, the organizational backlog that we have and, you know, each of these, you know, probably deserves a lot of discussion. Some of them, the enhanced engagement with EBDC is more of like an internal backlog item.
Yeah, it's definitely, I mean, and these are all great things and they do need to be done, I guess, but there's, it's impossible to do these in a year. I mean, some of these will be, you know.
Yeah, I, that's why I put fiscal years twenty-six to thirty, to twenty-thirty, and to me that, there is as part of strat, prioritization part of this process is like, what do we actually want to do over the year? What if these items, we could use this time, start kicking that on, and how do we tackle it?
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, for me, it's, it's a, it's a combination, I mean, I'm, I'm gone in three months anyway, so, but it's, you know, what, what is it that I see in Ellsworth and what is it that, you know, that Ellsworth faces for issues, but what are some of the things also that we can use these new, these great resources and, and enhance and make them, them better? You know, it's like, is it, if we, like, we want more people to come to Ellsworth, we want Ellsworth to be bigger because we want the kids to be here to help the school system, right? If that's our priority, then that means we need to look at economic development, we need to look at housing, we need to look at beautification, we need, you know, the things that bring people to a city. If it's really that we want to increase our, our business to lower the tax base because commercial money brings in way more than residential money does, then what does that mean? We have a business development plan, do we use that and we start focusing on that? We have our whole new, oh my God, what is it you worked on, I just lost my.
Comp plan.
Comp plan, thank you. Duh. You know, we have a comp plan, do we want to work off that and start looking at the comp plan and the things that, that the city and the, and a, and a great group spent a year and a half working on? I think that's my idea of where we want to put our priorities and then projects come from that, but.
The comp plan is a great idea. I, I think if you, just from memory of what was on the comp plan, cross-referencing the bullet points on this entire document with the comp plan, it would be clear which line up exactly and stand out as prioritized.
But even the comp plan, we'd need to prioritize what we want to work on with that.
It's built in, it's got a prioritization system built into it.
Yeah.
That's, here's all the million things and here are the top priorities in each section and some of those would line up and at least it would save us some time saying, I wonder how the town feels about prioritizing this thing, oh, it's already in the comp plan as top priority.
Yeah.
We've already done the research.
We've already done the research, yeah.
Or as best as we can.
And it's like even when we have the TIF consultant that wants to look at our TIF plan, you got to have priorities in order to have, you got to know where you want your focus to be. The last time the TIF was redone, it was, we were trying to build up certain areas of the city, which did not really work all that long, but we were trying to bring in housing and we were trying to bring in business using the TIF plan and those incentives. Do we want to do that again? I mean, you can't decide how you want to have your zoning and your, and, and your incentives unless you know what you're incentivizing, so.
Yeah, that's the, one of the, the TIF is, I know in our conversation on strategy kind of came to the top of the list.
Yeah.
To attracting more people and encouraging economic development. I will say that these items, you know, I went through the comp plan, you know, the, yeah, the comp plan is, you know, ten X. The business attraction plan, the comp plan, the housing needs assessment is ten X, the strategic backlog, if not twenty X. So, I think it was Michael Porter at the Kennedy School has said a lot of strategy planning, he's not deciding what to do, it's deciding what not to do.
Yeah, exactly.
And so there's a piece of that and how, how that aligns to our visions and values for Ellsworth. So, yeah, I, I could pull out how each of these, you know, matches the matrix, there is a level of that as well.
Where does this list come from? Is this the stuff that keeps you awake at night?
No, this, this came from me, Sarah, the management team, things the council has asked for, things that are already lined up, it was part of the budget process, the business attraction plan, the housing needs assessment, all those pieces, so.
Okay, so it's the leadership's sense of amongst all the great programs or plans we've got where the priorities lie?
Yeah, it's kind of a key element to this, which is just the prioritization of these pieces, which to me, there's, personally, there's a, a real hunger for strategic vision on like, this is what we are setting out to do. I think in my deck, that's kind of, you know, a much more minimized version of this. And how do you overcome inertia? How do you, how do you build great teams that can accomplish these pieces and, and rapid review of the data to make sure we're actually accomplishing these things? If not, you can see it in the comp plan, it already is sitting on a shelf. It's, it's a year old, it's not there, put the things that you're going to do on a, on a, well, it's a year outlook, on this is what we want to accomplish in twenty-six to thirty over this period of time, have a series of counselors that are responsible for different pieces of the business through a council workshop structure and we can kind of align in, you know, on one or two years and what we're trying to set up and then, you know, over five really have some more ambitious goals, but.
So could I make a suggestion, I guess, to move the conversation based on what we're hearing so far, that we have a list of priority, tasks, strategies, goals, but to be able, they're, they're organized by where they fall in the structure of the organization and what I picked up from what Michelle was saying is if we start with what are the outcomes that we want, and it may be, you know, slide ten is the priority work streams, some of these are governance and realignment, some are fiscal and infrastructure, some are economic development, there's community and policy, but look at outcomes as the way to organize them more than where they fall within structure. And then another piece that's missing from framing up how we do this is who are our partners in each of these and be able to, I'm already seeing this as a spreadsheet with, where, you know, determine what are the, what are the, what are the outcomes that we're looking for and then how do these fall and some may overlap, it's not going to be, you know, everything's connected, so there's going to be some overlap there, which is fine, so long as they're captured somewhere. Who are our partners in doing these things?
So when you say outcomes we are looking for, are you talking more about like what Michelle was saying, attract more people to the city? Ellsworth like larger levels of outcomes or more specific?
You've got the big, to, to keep us from getting into like a mission statement quagmire. You know, the goal is that we have a thriving community and then within that, there's been a mention tonight of how many housing units we want to create, having a thriving recreation within the, the town, excuse me, within the city, like with, within the recreation department. It's interesting, it struck me, one of the finance tasks was improve the state's, excuse me, improve the city bond rating, that's an outcome. It's not like we can decide that on Tuesday we're going to do that, that's going to be an outcome of the other work that's happening.
Yeah.
So that could be a finance outcome that we want is that we're improving our bond rating and here are the ways that we're going to do it. Who are our partners? And from there, I think clarity on priorities, maybe there's specific timing that we have to do it by a certain time or the, like the impact of improving our city bond rating will impact the cost of borrowing to do some of the other things. So I think it will become clearer and I, I love the idea of just tying back to the comprehensive plan, which is comprehensive, and if that work has already happened about what are the priorities and where do we need to be? A lot of that may exist in the comp plan and then it's putting these that have been bubbling up within that context and then we can only do so much. So who has the drive for it? Who are the partners, where's the capacity and what's the impact? You know, focus where we're going to have the greatest impact.
What do you mean about who are the partners?
You've got, oh, let's pick one, library rebranding initiative. Well, that would be the library, that would be maybe the school system, that would be ask the library who their partners are, do they have a friends organization? Is there someone on the council who's particularly interested in the library who would want to engage? Somebody at the state level who could help us with that? It's rebranding, do we have somebody on staff who, they may not be the library person, but our communications person, are they the pro along the branding? That's just off of my head, but that kind of, who's going to be involved in doing this?
And how, how would you like to see that in kind of our strategic planning?
My brain works in Google Sheet. So for, what do you mean? That's like.
So you just want a list of partners or you want to see?
The Google Sheet is the, where, where you document the brainstorming that comes with it. If, if the people around this table decide to prioritize, we're not capturing everybody who's going to be involved and everybody's going to have the impact, and I'm not talking about redoing the comp plan process, but maybe I didn't understand your question completely.
I've just, in terms of the deep dive on partner, what's this piece of this you want to see in the strategic planning?
If we're deciding.
Or you just want that embedded in that we're partnering?
That should be part of the thinking for deciding where the prioritization could be. And I'm not talking an extensive process because we need to get going on these things, but improve city events. I think we can all list off probably twelve organizations or people who ought to be, who are already working in that space. So how do they feel about taking something like that on?
Partnerships.
Okay, who has ownership in each of these projects and who wants to have a decent ownership in a sense that they belong to the outcomes that are here?
So maybe it's partnerships is kind of baked into each of the larger outcomes that we're putting towards, it's just who are the, making sure that those players are involved in these pieces?
Invite, we can't make sure they are, we can invite them to and ask them who isn't invited yet. And again, this isn't meant to slow it down, this isn't months, this is get rolling on it and then bring people in as we move forward. I'm thrilled that we've got something like this to start with and then again, the context of all the other plans.
Yeah, I think kind of Michelle and I, when we were talking originally about this, you know, here's some of the general things that, again, I've been reading the tea leaves and the council and the business attraction plan, the comp plan, when they asked, I keep a record and we kind of, and then, but then how do we think about them in general areas? Like place making, I know is something we talked about as being a big, you know, and how do we have a focus on that and make sure that we're investing in place making and that?
What is place making? What does that mean? Yeah, it's like, no, I know what it means, but what does that mean? That's a general term, but place making involves a whole slew of things that, that can happen to, to create it and, but it, and I love the idea of partnerships because, just like when we get EBDC together in the chamber and the city and things, you, you get people together and, and you get them all driving, if you get all of these business organizations and they're all driving for the same goal, you're going to be much more effective than if you, if the city's driving for a goal and all of the people that have to do with it are not, then you're, you're clashing and then, and you're not getting the, the kind of help that the city would need to be. The city can't be going in a different direction than everybody that lives in it, I guess, or works in it or has organizations in it.
And with, with place making, if people are thinking, puzzling over what does that mean, I would suggest, close your eyes and think of Ellsworth and what are the images that come to mind? It's literally what is it about the place? It's, it could, for me, it would be the river, it's Norton Park, it's Main Street, it's the grand, it's Harbor Park, we would all, it's what are the places that, not that we're the only place in the world that has them, but that make you think about, make you care about Ellsworth. City Hall might be a place for place making, we want to make sure that this is, you've said, a welcoming, open place. That has a lot to do with its design, is the landscaping, the design of the outside so that people are welcome to come in? Those are pieces of place making that just make it home or make it a functional place where we are. Your neighborhood may be part of, my neighborhood is part of place making. So I'm looking at a way to structure the conversations and invite input, not to slow this down. But we've, we've got to bring in the part, we have to invite the partners, it's up to them whether they come in, but invite the partners to be a part of this as we build towards, as we say, doing the fun stuff, that's going to go in our Ellsworth chant too.
Doing the fun stuff.
Doing the fun stuff.
Ellsworth time is now.
Good conversation and I think for me personally, what I think is, you know, we do, you know, this is like the first time we're having this conversation in this setting, so we're not going to figure it all out today for sure. But what I, in my mind, the focus in the near term is rules and governance issues because I think streamlining how we operate is going to make us more efficient in being able to tackle what, you know, the substantive issues. And then I'm very excited about the monthly workshop and because I think once we have that structured and going, then we can start feeding in a lot of these projects that we're talking about and getting these things talked about and going. So I, you know, when I'm looking, I've gone, I went through this list now and I, first I checked ones that I'm interested in and then I went back through and underlined ones that I kind of like fine tune, you know, trying to make something productive and I'll give this to you Charlie if you want it. And I put my initials, but for me, it's, yeah, I think focusing on that and getting those, you know, I think optimizing city hall operation hours, four-day work week, reviewing our board and commission policies, you know, the redesigning the finance committee structure, all that is going to go into just the city running, the council running more efficiently and us running more efficiently, I think. And then I'm happy to, for me, stre, you know, what I think we should be focusing on is housing, childcare and transportation, that's what I've kind of campaigned on and I still think that's, because that ultimately supports economic development. And, you know, when I think of a place, you know, it's, you know, housing and having houses available to the people that want to live and work here, childcare is obviously massively important because then those folks that live here with families can, can work and, and, you know, I mean, some folks don't, that's fine, they're home with their children, but then I think transportation goes both to ultimately, you know, maintaining the city's infrastructure and I think the SIP plan to me is a huge one, I think we should be flying, and I know Sarah's been working on everything, but I think we should be hammering the one five ten SIP plan. And that also, then what does transportation include for, you know, you know, public transportation and folks getting around, so that's just my thoughts, reflections on this list and the conversation to this point.
And I think that that's, that's like what we need is that bigger, because housing, that's a, that's a high-level, multi-dimensional topic.
Yeah, so then I checked off for housing, I was going through, it was like TIF ordinance rewrite, short-term rentals, the courthouse area urban growth expansion, right? Because that's where we're going to build that. So for me, those are, I would like to focus on those issues off this list. And then again, for childcare, renew, you know, finalizing the lease with the Moore Center in YMCA, you know, I think there's, you know, maybe there's other things we're not thinking about there too. And again, that's a good time to go back to the comp plan, I don't know what we said there about that, but went on these issues going, because like you said, we've already, the community's already gone through this and, you know, what is there? But yeah, but yeah, housing is a huge thing, but to me, it's, do we have enough housing? And then obviously developing housing develops, you know, that increases the, you know, the tax base as well and there's benefits there and I know you've got to balance in paying for all the services, but, you know, yeah, that's my.
The comp plan, but, but it's also, I mean, you, you can't build it and they will come, that's not going to work. I mean, if you, you're going to do that and we want a younger generation, then you need to look at your parks and your schools and, and, and also jobs with, or, and, good jobs and or websites and, you know, and all that stuff and so, so I, I am so tired tonight, I can't say my words, but, you know, that's, that, but that's like a, that's something that we, I absolutely agree with you, that, that housing, we haven't had a new subdivision in how many years in Ellsworth? It also means the planning board and getting those, those things through there and, you know, efficiently and nicely and, and the same thing with our business and, and so I guess that's why I just, if that's what we want to do, is really look at housing, which, you know, then that's what we ought to make that decision, do we want to look at housing and education and those things?
I just want to talk through one point of the comp plan, just to give an example of how it's structured, because it's really, I mean, there's a reason we paid a lot of money for consultants to put this together, there's a lot of time talking to a lot of people. So just because we're talking about housing, I went to principle three, prioritize affordable and attainable housing to meet the needs of a diverse population. So there is stuff in here about. So there is stuff in here about like where does our population come from, where is it going? What are the needs as suggested by the consultants after looking at all the data? And then after talking to all the people that came to the talks and the committee and everything, we had a huge list of priorities that were priority action items funneled into three priority action items and, you know, they're listed by code, so you can look up the codes. So for example, H1C is you to use affordable housing tax increment financing, TIF to assist affordable housing developments in designated growth areas. You go to the appendix where that item is listed and it says, that's the key principle, fits under whatever, blah, blah, blah. Here are the responsible collaborative agencies, there's a planning board, there's the Ellsworth Council, there's a couple other ones listed. What is the cost? What is the ease of implementation as audit graph of like how long might it take and how much staff time? And then what timeline is it? And then there's a couple links to potential funding sources and best practice examples. So that's the structure, how how the the comp plan is is sort of set up. And a lot of them align with these, they just now include, here's some partners already embedded and an estimate of cost and timeline estimates and partner lists. It's it's helpful, I don't know if it'll be helpful for all of these, but a lot of this is already there, kind of what you're.
Yeah, and it was definitely helpful, yeah, developing some of these ideas and these pieces. I think what's difficult about those is A, the volume and the prioritization and how it gets actualized. Because you actually read it and you're just like, this is, this should be way fair down. And be like, you know, you know, so how do you, and they all end up like this. They all end up, you do the plan and then, so how do we create a mechanism as a council that we're living to the comp plan? That we have priority work streams that are aligned to the comp plan and the council's kind of view on that? Because we have to put them into action. Do we want to make that, you know, bring in the comp plan to every piece? And we can, I could restart this to your all's priorities and then how it lines up with some of the comp plan pieces. I could definitely.
Might help to, I mean, because you read this and then you look at your first one and you're like, TIF, TIF, let's rewrite TIF and let's make sure to include housing because that's already written as a priority.
Yeah, and there's, maybe going out a little bit, there's nothing in here that's not aligned to some piece of this comp plan. The question is, is there something in here that we really shouldn't be doing? Because there's a better priority that we need to put forward and does the council have input? That's kind of one of the things I struggle with Patrick and why I lean towards exactly what you said, which is, to me, my first focus is rules and governance in this new workshop structure so that there's ownership of pieces, because I'm never going to be able to do intellectually, every, like, hold all the pieces of the comp plan, hold all your ideas on what should be prioritized and then create action plans for each of these pieces. I'll need, I need more council guidance on larger policy areas and that they are aligned with council thinking, plans, how they're getting moved forward. Because to me, that's the critical missing piece right now is, we have these council meetings, we do a lot of amazing things, we went through a lot of our big accomplishments over the last year, they're huge things. But how do we have better structures for ensuring that they're aligning with the comp plan? And it's not just the fire of the day, as as you've mentioned Nancy. We've got a lot of that, that's what the budget process, that was our, a lot of our financial strategic resources for ordinance rewrites, the remaging the TIF districts, capital improvement plan, infrastructure, those are enormous pieces that we're getting out of the way that are in the comp plan, the business attraction plan, these other ones, but.
Well, just on that note, like, those three things that we funded to get folks in there, like, for me, like, that's this year. Like, let's get these people, you know, let's get, bring in these folks and get to work on it because rewriting the ordinance and updating the TIF plan go together. You know, I'm thinking about the courthouse property, like, we need to rezone that. We need to incentivize, you know, talk about lowering barriers for development, you know. You know, can we minimize permitting costs and process, you know, to incentivize that? Like, it all, when I say housing, like, to me, that all goes together. And I think, yeah, we have, you know, it's also looking at like what's hot right now, like, we've funded these things. And I'm really excited to dive into those. I know that, you know, we've got to hire, you know, hire folks and get that process going, but again, me personally, those right there, those right there, I think are huge things we could be focusing on and a lot to be done just in those three areas of, you know, working towards these goals.
I think those those will also, they're going to ask questions that you're going to need to answer that are going to help you focus on what you want to do in the future. Even the capital development plan, you you can't make a plan without knowing what your what your outcome is that you want. So I was looking at this, this list and it said TIF ordinance rewrite and expansion, which we do need to do because it's outdated. But to what extent and for what? And then I did the parklet. Do we really need to concentrate on that? What's that going to get us? What do we, why would we want to do that for the parklet? The Urki reimagining, do we want to do that? And and if we do, why? What is, where is it, what priority is that going to help with if we keep Urki or not? So I guess that's, when I look at this, like even the village partnership initiative, I'm not positive what it is anyway, but to what extent, what is it going to give us if we do that? What what priority is that going to help us achieve by being in the village partnership initiative? That's where my my brain keeps going, that's how I I look at each one of these. I like, I want to know if we want this as a priority, why? And what larger priority is it going to help us achieve?
So can I flip this to back to one of your outcomes you want from tonight? Is how are we going to arrange the workshops?
Yep.
And in my mind, the workshop of the month ought to, in one part, inform the city council meeting for that month. So when we know what's going to be, I would imagine you've got framed out at least a couple of months, if not the full 12, what you want for action items in each of those, where there should be that workshop discussion for the next council meeting, so that'll be, maybe, you know, we allot so much time to that. And then the bigger picture of of looking, we don't want to be doing just month to month, but at least we've had a lot of the, it gives us time to digest the information we're getting and maybe raise questions before we're expected to make a decision at the council meeting. A second piece is, again, I think to keep playing with what we're talking about here on what I would like to do is, I don't know how many pages the comp plan is, but I struggle with reading in any helpful way on this screen.
It's this, this many pages.
So at least to have the implementation matrix printable so that I can see it and read it and write on it and have conversations about it. And cross-reference it with what you've seen as issues that come up. And again, thank you, John, for bringing this up. It's so easy to forget, oh yeah, we just invested a whole lot of resources in this. But they are prioritized in zero to two years, three to five, six to 10, and then ongoing. We're going to have to pare that down or figure out who else. Again, listening, one of these things, approving city events, the partners may be able to lead on that and let us know what they might need from the city, that that they're going to be very happy developing, fleshing that out, coming to us maybe at a workshop with what they're thinking, rather than taking our efforts. I did not know we're considering an Eel Festival, I think that's awesome. I don't think the council has to be involved in that, I think there are organizations in town that will.
Absolutely.
So that's again about, if it was deemed by the community as a priority one, who are the people who care the most, who've got the capacity? They can lead on it, what do they need from the city, either staff or or the council? And this gets a whole lot more doable, that you are the, I've lost the word, who's the guy, the conductor, but there's a better word for it, we'll just call you the conductor.
Sure.
You've got an orchestra going and you're not going to play all of the instruments.
Right.
But you're going to coordinate and you know who's going to be coming in, when with what? And that's where our chant will be, so that we'll have our Ellsworth chant, it's now a symphony.
Yeah, and I should, I should note, this is.
Maestro, and I've got Mater D and it's like, no, that's not what I mean. Maestro.
I don't know, but you've got that the Ellsworth fight song, the high school fight song, that's all I can think of now.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and I should note that, yeah, this is, this is the internal staff kind of piece. So like, and to me, that's one of the discussions we had this morning was like, we're developing this project management team as a collaborative group to meet every single week, to start attacking these things methodically and relentlessly. But we have to bring in a council and make sure you guys want to do these things. And some of them, like the Eel Festival, it's actually the head of Maine Office of Tourism mentioned that because we have the Yeals, it's such an Ellsworth thing.
That would be just, no, no.
Upgrade, but yeah, we don't need to bring that to a council workshop piece. We can probably just move forward and inform you when you guys, it's going to happen or if it's not going to happen, because that's the Parks and Rec directors thing. But to me, there's, there is a piece that a lot of these things do need more discussion and how do we bring them forward? And I do worry about getting bogged down, like the business attraction plan, you know, with the, almost all of these things are in this backlog, so we're doing it, wayfinding signage was in this piece. You know, we have this plan, this plan, these other pieces. To me, having some council ownership of like, as opposed to being the conductor of all these pieces, like, I'm going to need some subconductors at a council level to be like, all right, I'm owning business attraction, economic development and working with the counselors and prioritizing and getting them here. Because I'm doing a ton of that with staff too. And I'm trying to be a good coordinator between these different entities. But it's, it's, I think, one of the the problems of this growing organization and this huge amount of task environment that we have. We also have an enormous and, from a strategic planning perspective as well, like our stakeholder and authorizing environment is enormous. You know, in a private business or another business, you can have this meeting with five people on a closed door and really hammer it out. And they have only those heads there. Now you get seven on what do the partners think and what do this person thinks? And in the meantime, you know, we've had two, three, four, five months go by and we haven't hit the things. So that's, that's, you know, I I feel like back to Patrick's rules and governance and how we actually get after them.
Well, and and it's a good point about the, again, I'm I'm focusing on what are the outcomes that we want and rules and governance. The outcome is to be able to do the other things, but also to have a, that's city, well, city hall broadly, that city government functions well and serves its role and it's a great place to work. Those are like, but one of, one of the primary outcome of rules and governance is not for rules and governments, it's so that everything else flows. So, but but in addition to that is that city government works for the people who are the work here and the businesses and residents and such. So it's in, in, it makes sense that staff arrange this kind of by by work group. And and I keep hearing between Patrick and Michelle and and within the comp plans is what's the outcome we want? The outcomes would be housing, transportation, sorry.
Childcare.
Childcare, those are like three outcomes, what is city government's role for each of those? And then these same tasks may be able to be arranged around. Maybe there are six goals overall, big, the big sky goals that we're shooting for, to Michelle's point. And it might be, you know, the the planning and economic development part and part to recreation flow under a couple of those outcomes that we're looking for.
Yeah, and these categories, we're really seeing all these plans that we put forward, you know, seeing what's already in the work streams. You know, this is kind of generally with that, but we could definitely have, you know, I had library schools, public safety, that's kind of, they all have their own.
Look at infrastructure, what is our overarching goal and the objective, the outcome that we want with infrastructure? These are going to break down into our goal of public safety, we need a goal for public safety. Transportation is in here. That the place making, the cupola repair, strategic disposition of surplus city-owned properties, that might fall under housing. So this is task oriented or department oriented, but let's break it out, same list, but break it out into what is it that we're trying to achieve? To Michelle's point, what are we, how are we going to know we've succeeded? Is going to be bigger than the tasks, but arranging them like the reason I'm doing this today is today, you know, and there, and again, it's going to overlap because it's all connected.
Steve, you've been pretty quiet.
Oh, I'm just steaming. Well, let's let Tammy talk first.
No, you please, go ahead.
I I think the most direct question that you've asked is what does the standard workshop want to look like? And we've been all over strategy subjects and et cetera. And I I guess the best analogy, I keep hearing all of these things that that people want government to be involved in and I keep thinking that this is private industry work, non-government work. And there's many analogies that I can think of. One is take care of the pennies and the dollars take care of themselves. While you're planning a bank safety robbery prevention meeting for three days, the bank gets robbed. Those things come to my mind when I hear of all of this going on. So without boring you too bad about the comp plan and the business attraction plan, plans are a point in time that collect dust on shelves and it doesn't account for the world that is turning faster than any plan can be printed. And it's like computer technology. While we're talking about what we would like a computer to do, computer technology has already outdated that, we just didn't know it was there. So I'm troubled with all of of this. It boils down to one thing in my mind is become a business friendly community and business is going to take care of the rest of it. And Patrick, I I I want to politely ban you a little bit here because I I heard you mention that, you know, we want to streamline the process and lower the cost of permitting, et cetera. And just last meeting, or maybe two meetings ago, this council voted to raise the permit fees. So why are we talking about streamlining it if we just got done voting to raise the fees? That that haunts me. That that's like, this council just voted to raise all of these permit fees and now we're talking about how can we become more friendly to the process? That that is just counterproductive in my world. Aside from all of that, what do we want this workshop to look like? My thinking is pretty simple, let's not bog it down with a whole bunch of force. You know what the agenda is to, or you have an idea what the August agenda is going to be. And it should be a preview of that and maybe from the manager's point of view, some question or input from the council on one subject that you would like some direction from that could be thought about. But the workshop, I believe, should be about the upcoming agenda and what are we facing? And what is some of the information that we could be, that the council would like to see done before we vote? We don't want to make this, I don't believe you want to make this workshop so weighted down that we don't get a focus on what's coming up in two weeks and what's the information we need to make a good decision. That's my call.
Yeah, I think I'm glad you brought up that business friendly community and the rest will take care of itself. I kind of thought the same with housing in some ways.
Housing.
There you go.
Housing will take care of the rest of economic, but I talked to somebody today, he said, what are you, housing? How are you going to get all of those schools? They're going to have to, they're going to be overrun and there's going to be those issues, like, ah, then how do you answer that? How do you answer that? But at the same time, to your point, Steve, I think it was Eisenhower who said, you know, something like all plans are absolutely critical and all plans are completely worthless. We never would have been able to accomplish D-Day if we didn't do an incredible amount of planning. If we followed the plan on D-Day, we would never have actually made it through. So there is like this constant pull and push between you create the plans, you got to execute on them. But there's maybe, I'm hearing a little bit of just like there's some larger visioning on some of what are our large? visioning on some of what are our larger strategic priorities? Maybe it's place ma, maybe there's not exactly perfect alignment in the council, but on placemaking, on business friendliness, I know for me that ties into transparency and fiscal responsibility, too, which I think is, I know, um.
And, and I, I know I preach business, um, business friendly, and obviously I must be wrong in some regards because I view Ellsworth as not a business-friendly community, but yet there are plenty of businesses coming to town. So in, in that point, um, I can't be, um, maybe I'm completely wrong in that because there is activity coming to town. But does it have to be so convoluted? And does it have to be so difficult? And do we have to have impact fees on one part of the town and not the other? This TIF business, I think, ought to be eliminated altogether. That is, is the biggest bunch of foolishness I've ever seen in all my life. Nobody here will agree to that, I don't expect you to. But, um, you asked and I'm stating that it is the biggest bunch of foolishness, it is, uh, it's, it's a, um, a slush fund to, to benefit some and cost others. I, I struggle with that. Everybody needs the same treatment. Everybody needs the same treatment. If you're gonna give out a Tootsie Pop to everybody in the city of Ellsworth, then that's what we need to do. You give one Tootsie Pop to everybody in the city of Ellsworth. You don't give ten to this guy and none to that guy. That doesn't work for me. I'll shut up.
No, no, the, um, I, I loved a lot of what you're saying here, um, especially on how we're gonna structure this, that maybe I can, we can keep this strategy discussion as a standing item. The, in terms of the other pieces, I'd thought about for the August fourth of the YMCA discussion, we already have one workshop that produced, um, some action items that we need to revisit. The piece on trying to get it so that it aligns to the council meeting is like a preview of that, and in theory, I like that concept, I think it's gonna take us a little while to get there. Um, beca, in theory, I would like it to be like workshop approved or council subcommittee approved before it can even come to the table, which other organizations do, just so it is fully vetted, and that's sort of what leads, um, to actually getting even on the agenda. And having, also, I think, as part of this, planning these things, pairing these things down, we can get a little bit more towards, like, here's the, we're gonna have to plan further, we're gonna have to look a year out and say, you know, maybe a part of the strategy session, we can come back and say, here's, we can do a matrix of what people prioritize here, we can talk about larger priorities of, um, you know, uh, housing, childcare, and transportation, business friendliness, placemaking, uh, what are those larger kind of pieces of the organization that we really wanna anchor in? Some that we may agree on, and some that we may disagree on, that can kind of push forward how the things are.
Could I interject one thing? The, the workshop that you have the first day of, the first Monday in December, is gonna look a lot different than the one you have the first one in August. And the one next April is gonna look a lot different than the one that happened in December. And I think over a twelve-month period, there'll be some jockeying and moving, and there'll be a settlement, and the pendulum will swing slower, and you'll find a, a comfort zone, would be my guess. I, I don't think that we can plan, I think a lot of this meeting is, how do we plan this? But I think we're missing managing the moment, and I think managing the moment is gonna tell us how we plan the future. And managing the moment would be, you know, after you've had six or ten, um, standard workshops, um, there could be some shifting and moving and some comfort zones, much like this council, um, goes through, I'm sure, when this was originally incorporated. These council meetings today look much different than the council meetings ten years ago, twenty years ago, thirty years ago. It's been a, a movement in progress, and, and I, I can't believe that a standardized workshop is, is gonna be any different than that.
Just following up on Steve, I agree with Steve that I think, and I envisioned the workshop, it's a mix of, you know, as we know, some stuff always, you know, the, the fire starts, right, and it's whatever it is, and we need to address it in the workshop. And I think, accepting that we're gonna need to always create space for kind of like, things that we may not anticipate, or, the, the workshop gives us that flexibility now to like, get it in front of the council before, you know, it's brought to us at a city council meeting, and, so I think having flexibility there, but at the same time, also creating the space for these broader, more strategic conversations, and, I think, yeah, I think we'll find, you know, it'll settle out, and we'll find like, the, the right balance. I think we just need to get it set up and start going for it and see what happens, and, um, I think, like, I agree with Steve completely, I think, a year from now, we're, you know, we'll be able to look back and be like, okay, what's working, what's not, how do we, it's an iterative process, so, um, I, I agree completely with Steve on that.
Is that recorded?
I think it is.
Okay.
But I think we should get Steve's Tootsie Pop strategy on the next August meeting. I'm, I'm all for giving everyone a Tootsie Pop.
I don't like Tootsie Pops.
I'll see now that we have a problem.
See, this is the problem of giving the same thing to everybody.
And the problem of strategy, nobody can agree in the type of candy we'll give out for free. So, uh, just to, uh, kinda put a point in the, um, in the first workshop, so we're coming up here, we have YMCA discussion, we'll have a follow-up to the strategy discussion, just to keep the ball rolling on what we want this to be. And maybe I'll pick some of these pieces, uh, that are somewhat council-agenda aligned that are coming up, so we can start previewing that. And, and I would like a discussion on council ownership, too, on these pieces, I feel like there's a, I'm already pretty maxed, you know, we're getting a Parks and Rec Director.
Would you like us, would you like counselors to come to that workshop with, maybe either in pairs or groups of three, or by ourselves, to say like, I looked over this, I did some reading, I talked to some people, these are things that I wanna take on, and here's why, and advocate for those, and see?
I could see having a discussion of the things in these priority lists that are really your, maybe your, everybody's top fives that we wanna see move forward.
And to be clear about which ones are most important, or which ones we want to be engaged in, because those can be different.
Yeah, um.
It's gonna need, I mean, I, I think it'll need both, I mean.
Well, they're, they're two different lists, just be clear what you're asking for, and, yeah.
But both are important, a, as well as that these came from internally from staff, it means that somebody on the staff has thought about these and has interest, which will be necessary for implementation, but also, we know their priorities in the city, and also, a counselor is like, I wanna put some energy into this, which I think will also be necessary, so all those three things come together.
Yeah, and we're kind of going towards more of a project owner system internally, that having a little bit more of a prioritization for the next year of council meetings, um, and what we can line up first, they just, a lot of this takes so much time and effort, so I think that would be helpful.
On that point, I think I agree with you, Charlie, like, you know, you need to, you're, you need to hear from us, right? We're the, the policy side of things, and, um, but at the same time, we all know how, you know, the staff and you have been working on, you know, we rely, and you guys, you guys are seeing the day-to-day, right? You guys are the boots on the ground, and you're like, here's an issue, here's an issue, you bring it to us, so it's a balance, right, of, I think, finding a way to feed us and for us to understand, well, here's what staff, here's what the, you know, the city is seeing, um, and us saying, well, here's what we prioritize, and then like, okay, where are these coming together? Because I learn a lot, you know, for me, it's great, like, I, I didn't realize X was an issue, like, I really think that's important, now that's my, now I'm, you know, I'm all over that, and I'm happy to do that. So like, it, having the conversation go both ways, I think, is important, I think that's why the workshops will be great. And, but, like, bringing to us, like, here's where the staff's at, here, you know, it's, we've gone through these, you know, this, this new system you're implementing, the project, I give away.
Project management team, yeah.
Project management team's like, well, project management team, here are the projects we're working on, right? And like, how do, you know, here, how are we gonna, and obviously, some of those projects are because we directed you to manage this project, but also from that is, here's what we're seeing, and so we're getting that feedback from the city, and I guess what I'm saying is like, you know, I want it to be two ways, right? You're giving us information, so we're learning, and then we're giving you information back, saying, well, here's what we wanna see, and then finding that, and we cooperate.
Yeah, to me, that was really the inception for that piece, which I was so excited on the idea, even though struggling a little bit since the idea of two meetings, was just that, can we, can we get those council meetings to just be a little bit more aligned with what you all want, um, and get your input, so it's not at the level of up-down, you know, due to the laws, I don't talk to you all in groups about these things, but we're at the meetings themselves, we might have some individual conversations, we might have been, and then sometimes I'll find like, oh, I didn't know Tammy was just gonna hate that idea of this piece, and she had a really important, like, small section, which we didn't flag at the right time, and if we just had a general conversation with the whole group, we would have had that there. To me, it can really help in terms of reducing sludge, and, because, like, that's gonna be the way that we can actually accomplish a good bulk of this over the next five years. I'm trying to think a little bit more long-term here. There's some stuff that's gonna happen immediately, but there's a structural changes to have these go through, and how can also, can I activate the council to be involved with them, not just from an up or down level, or, um, but to really engage with our community partners and these other pieces? To me, there's an important part of that, too, which I would like to see, which other cities and towns have used, which is, you know, the council's really in there. I put in, actually, no, I took it out. I put in like rules, or, and rules in government slash like strategic planning. Like, can the council lead their strategic planning process? And I can bake that into the staff plans, um, as opposed to, I kinda have to live in these two different worlds. And then the third world, like, then there's all the nonprofits and those other partners, where they expect some level of guidance and direction and how this fits into our plans. So, how do we kind of center and align on that, and then have work, work streams that are really able to accomplish these big things, because Ellsworth's time is now, isn't, like, that's the.
Charlie, what is your vision for the city?
My vision is a modernized city government, um, so that we can attack this enormous comp plan, and accomplish most of it, to be honest with you.
But I mean, for the city as a whole, so modernized city government, but if, if, if you could, if you're looking over like, the next five years, how, how do you see Ellsworth? You know, more people, more businesses, um, more beautification, more, I mean, what is, what is your, your vision for five years?
So, yeah, there's the rules and government side of things, which is the, the bureaucracy is functioning, and that's, that's a five-year task in and of itself. Um, and I hate to, Governor Baker got a lot of criticism when he was governor of Massachusetts who I worked for, for lack of vision.
But what does that do for Ellsworth?
I'm more in Steve's category on this, it's like, I, I'm not here to design Ellsworth, I'm here to make city government modern and effective and efficient in the best way possible. Now, there are, I have a piece of that when it comes to parks, beautification, placemaking, we're doing that right now, we're just, Public Works is overwhelmed, as we've seen through all these council meetings, with, um, too much task and not enough people to do it. So, um, we recently redesigned some of the units internally, we're adding the Parks and Rec Director, and we're gonna be, be doing Nolan Park, and we're gonna be redoing, um, the, uh, the downtown has gotten a lot more beautification, you've probably seen. We're actualizing a lot of that beautification and placemaking. On the economic development side of things, yeah, we're gonna, I'd put housing and economic development in the same category, wanna see fifteen hundred units built here so that people can have a place to live, um, at a reasonably affordable price, and walk to downtown and frequent the businesses around here, I think that's a, a huge aspect of the, of the organization that, again, you look at, and when I, we did the financing background on this, this organization, I pointed that out, that where our priorities, the things that are in the comp plan, the things that are here are enormous, but we have one person in UConn Dev, and we have no Parks and Rec Director, and the part, piece of the organization we've resourced are public safety. Three million dollar increase over five years per year in that side of things. Now, financial resources aren't the only piece that can, um, affect that. So, that's it in my, in general, on the, um, and then the infrastructure piece is like one of the biggest ones, just deferred maintenance and backlog, I think we've talked about it. You know, there's times when I just wanna pave, Urkey, pave, Pom Paws Point, pave, um, the more, because it's just, we have so much deferred maintenance, um, which to me, the real focus over the next five years in systems and capacity building, um, you know, is gonna be the key to success here, that we have an organization that can process these things. And in many ways, my vision is how do we activate the council? Because it's like, I'm from Castine, um, as the city manager here, as an administrator to operationalize, like, your all's vision as the elected representatives of this city, and I've talked about that before, on the uniqueness of the city manager, um, in the city manager council, where there almost seems to be a political element to it, or there is, that the manager needs to be, um, you know, holding these political pieces, that was part of my performance reviews, um, I'm always happy to talk about those things, and how can I be out in the community more, how can I be out in the public more, how can I be engaged more here? But, you know, there's also an element to the council on what is your all's vision for the city, what do you want? And how can that affect the strategic planning for here? It's not pithy, it's not.
No, actually, I, I was writing down what you said, you've got a great vision for, for the city. You, you want to have a, a city with plenty of housing so that people can live here, and you want it to be, um, easy to live here, and, and, you know, like, I broke, it seems like you want it to be a great place to live. Steve wants business-friendly, um, because we need to have more businesses than Ellsworth, but, um, and absolutely, and I think we are, we can be, again, a very business-friendly place. But, um, and then part of doing that is, you know, making decisions on city buildings and what we're gonna do because we have too much deferred maintenance. I mean, you've, you've got a great vision for five years, you, it just needs to be, I think if we took your vision and we said, you know what, this is our priorities, and we get our priorities from the comp plan, and, and those, I think it can really work out, and it can make us decide which of these we wanna do in the next five years and how we're gonna do it, so we're not overwhelming staff. I really think you're on the absolute right track, you really are, I just think we need to somehow be able to, um, articulate it so that we can then concentrate on it, and then, and I would be more than happy to, to, to just, you know, make out a priority list, but I wanna know what I'm making it out for. And I think you just said it, you, you really did, you, you just, we need to just put it in one, not a mission statement, that's not at all, but, but, but this is, this is what we're gonna look at, for the next five years, we're gonna look at housing, and housing, what does that mean? It means we gotta have good infrastructure, it means we gotta have, um, a good planning board so that we can get people to, um, build housing.
Urban ordinances.
Or, look at our ordinances, look at our, um, housing TIF, which is different than economic development TIF, but that's exactly, you, you've got it, you've, you've hit the nail on the head, we just gotta organize it.
Yeah, I think I struggle with that when, you know, because there is the operational brain that I have, which is.
Yep.
And, as Governor Baker, you know, it's, everything's broken in government all the time, you find the thing that's most broken, you fix it, you keep going, and stick to that part of it.
But that's reactionary, that's reactionary, though, and, and these are great projects, they really are, but, um, do we do a project for the sake of doing a project, or are we doing it so that we can accomplish something and make the city better? And at the, the whole time we're doing this, we gotta look at the budget, you know, what, what can we afford to, to do, and, and, so.
Yeah, and I think that's, to your point, Michelle, and that's kind of the way I've thought of the last year, is just try to figure, find the pieces that felt the most broken, need the most support, um, and.
Because you walked into that, though, that's why, I mean, you walked into it.
Yeah, and there, and now it's just, we're just at a different place now in the organization, where, yeah, we're gonna always be optimizing, we're always gonna need to do better in a bunch of areas, but how can we actually think of what's interesting about municipal versus state government? Is the actual ability to, to hold, uh, what you wanna do at a level of complexity that's, you can make it. And there's so many variables at a state, and then even more at a federal level, um, but, you know, and, to me, a big point, too, is not that it's like my vision, but it's our shared vision.
Exactly.
That we're kind of.
Yeah, and the thing is, is, and, and Steve is right, when it, when you, when you've got a plan, like a, a comp plan, or you've got a business attraction plan that has tasks, they're useless, because it's exactly like Steve says, you run out, those tasks eventually become obsolete or outdated. But if you use those plans as looking at the future so you can be proactive instead of reactive, I mean, no, what business, John will know, every business is always looking to the future to see what the next thing is coming up, right? Because you don't want to be the business that waits until it all happens and then try to catch up with everybody else. Government's the same way, we, we have to be looking at what's coming up and what, what is, what is it that we need, and then. And then we look for that, and that's how you create your goals. So, and I agreed with you too, Steve.
Oh, my goodness.
Two in one night. But that's, you know, that's, I, that's just why I, I just keep pushing this and probably, I guess, not, you know, in vain, but, but I just think that if we just had a vision like you just said, and articulate it, we can look at everything else, we can look at the comp plan, we can look at and see what helps with that vision, and what those, what the vision of the comp plan group was.
If, if I could add a little bit, um, to that thought, one of the things I thought of a few moments ago is, this list right here, I think perhaps you as a city manager, and we as a city council, need to decide if you wanna do four of these subjects at one hundred percent satisfaction, or do you wanna do six of these subjects at eighty-six percent satisfaction? I think, I think that's part of the question that has to come up, is do you, do you spare this down and rock out three, or do you do six with, you're not completely happy with the results, but you got six things headed in the right direction? I think that's a big question in any of these lists, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think that's, uh, something to consider.
Well, and to me, it's also just my absolute need to base tests, uh, like to have that, those, here are the metrics for the year, to your point, Steve, like that, like, all right, and then, and publicly too, I think it's important, here's what we set out to accomplish this year, and then, and that you ask Nancy, and like, what does success look like? It's just like putting together, um, the things that you think will help enable your vision. It's not just we're putting it against a chalkboard, we actually thought about it, we put it in, um, and we succeeded, or we failed because we, you know, we tried really hard, we innovated, and, um, we, we moved together. I think in some ways, this, the original parts of this deck too, um, before I even arrived in City Hall, I'd created kind of my first hundred days of, um, what I wanted to accomplish. Accomplished ninety percent of those things, um, a lot of them were in the accomplishments document from the last year. Um, so, and to me, there is like the sub-point in the culture in our organization too, is, um, you know, do we have a, um, do we have a team that really just loves coming to work and is anchored in purpose? We're working a lot of that on our cultural side with the management staff. Then how do we blend that to all pieces of the organization, to your point, Michelle, is that there's clarity of vision and purpose? That's not as cliche as, you know, Ellsworth's time is now, it has to be a little more broad than that, um, but it's not just word soup, something that you don't go back to. My wife said she thinks it's the most livable city in Maine, or making Ellsworth the most livable city in Maine. Which, my wife is the chief strategy officer of an ad firm, um, that goes to different companies to create these little strategy things.
She's welcome to our meetings when you come.
Yeah, she'd probably lead this, not, she probably, she one hundred percent would lead this a lot better than, than I do. And unfortunately, cause we had all her family, and then I was on a camping trip, I wanted to kind of preview these things to get her feedback, it probably would have been beneficial to us, but.
You got it started.
Yeah, you did, it, it, it's a great, it's been a great conversation.
And I'm missing the Picnic on Block tonight in Castine, it's best deal day. Yeah, uh, it's my second favorite event in Castine, Fourth of July is.
What time does it get over?
Oh, I think it's already done probably, I mean, you know, it's clo- foggy and they're probably not having very much fun.
This is more fun, Charlie.
Yeah, well, awesome, I will, um, I'll, I'll simmer on this for a bit, um, and kind of think towards that next council meeting where we can have our next touch point on this discussion.
Do you need anything from us?
Besides money?
Besides the.
I didn't hear him ask for money tonight. We took care of that part, now it's.
No, we did our money resources, you know, we did our money strategic resources last time around. This is really how we spend our time, work as a group. You know, I'm wondering with the strategic backlog of kind of how we do a little matrix on that as part of the discussion. Patrick, if you wanted to take the lead on getting this into an Excel.
I was just gonna say, will there be a spreadsheet?
Yes.
Ready to roll.
What were the, what were the topics, the broad topics of the comp plan? Sorry, I haven't seen it in a year, so I can't remember.
It hasn't been a year, it was past, what, uh, September, maybe?
Feels like a year.
I know, everything feels like either yesterday or five years ago.
Two thousand four one.
But.
It was November twenty twenty-four, it just, it's.
Was it November?
It was the approval of it.
That is not a year ago. And we had some stuff we needed to get done, like the budget, so.
Yeah.
Now, and now we're like, phew, okay, let's go.
Yeah, let's, let's, we can.
So just, Charlie, I'm looking for this to be made into an Excel sheet?
Yeah, maybe that's the task, I don't really need you all, but just sort of how do we, working with the council, and this is kind of also putting the work back a little bit.
That's what I'm asking, like, what do you, what's next from us? You know, how can we advance this before our next workshop?
Yeah, maybe trying to align on what, so that it can help me and the staff start prioritizing our work streams. Um, I kinda think TIF and.
See?
Um, some of the things that are already obviously budgeted and moving forward are there. Um, and some of these other ones though, might be really interesting to kind of move into the council agenda process.
Does that maybe mean just like, hey, Charlie, like, here are.
This is great.
We've all following up, we all email you directly saying, here's what, we've taken this. Could be things not on the list.
Oh, yeah, there's a legal element to this too.
Well, we're not voting on anything.
Yeah, we're not voting on anything.
No, it's just, here's some.
This is all discussion.
It's just like, here's some information, right? And then, um, you know, I don't know who, you know, then you can see what we're, and you work with staff, whoever at the city, be like, okay, here's, every councillor said they want a full-time harbor master, right? And then you say, you start, you know, it was kind of just like, you know, here's where we're seeing, here's where we're seeing some people coming, like, there's some consensus, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and for me, that would be helpful to start creating alignment on those really big priorities so that we can start arranging a, a multi-year la- outlook, or a multi-month outlook, that's not just, um, cause it's a big pressure on Ebony and I, um, to, and the whole team actually, to get the memos in. I mean, we've made big strides, all the memos are now at my desk in a binder, I'll be able to go through them. But if we have a little more time, be like, hey, you're gonna be up here, you're gonna be up here. It can just take some of the, that paperwork out, so that would be helpful. Um, might also be helpful, Nancy, I don't know if you wanna work on, um, or Michelle, or Michelle, on kind of a little larger visioning piece that you, you've been talking about, that kind of higher level of abstraction which you put this in here.
To get there, what I'd love, I'd love to actually talk with Patrick about embedding these in a Google sheet that is arranged by goal, or it'll be pieces, I think, of the comprehensive plan. So, again, why are, why are we doing this thing? Why does this thing matter? What is the, what's the outcome that we're looking for? And I think it's gonna tie back to the comp plan, but it may not.
So the comp plan, the three, the three guiding principles that they call it are connected community, which is housing, sustainable growth, which would be housing and, and, um, commercial, and then economic vitality, which is definitely business. I mean, that really, those three high level pieces, I think everything that we're talking about can fit underneath them, but I think it'll help you get, that, that's, that's great, by the way, I don't mean, that's really great. The, um, I think it can help you then prioritize these things, and staff will also be able to say, you know, we don't have to do everything at once and get overwhelmed by looking at a list of fifty things that need to be done. It's really connected community, I, and I'm, I'm thinking, my brain's already going, connected community is housing, it's neighborhoods, um, it's also transportation, it's all of that. Sustainable growth, again, is deciding which type of housing that you want, making sure that businesses are coming in in the right places and.
Some might call it smart growth.
What a good idea.
Oh, smart growth, all right, and then economic vitality, which is, means that we get the businesses here, we keep them, right? So now we have the people to go shopping, we have the people to work, we have the labor force, we have all of those things.
We have the schools for people that wanna move here with their kids.
Right, and all of that is also part of business attraction, is they want places where people, there's, where their workers and their customers are gonna wanna live and. Yep.
Be able to afford to live, so.
I think if we look at it in, in those broad strokes, and then we look at what, what that means.
But also, we can almost take.
Like the comp plan did.
Page twenty-eight, if anybody's reading along at home.
What was that?
Page twenty-eight of the comp plan.
Okay.
And, and there's another, there's nine individual sort of icon descriptions of the things that fit under those three.
So does that work for you, Charlie, if Patrick and I kind of work together on these are the tasks, but where do they fit in with? Why do they matter?
The larger vision priorities.
Yeah.
It's like, to me, that's the big part of this, is the council has some ownership, and we'll revisit. There's like an institutional process too, with the new council, like, let's do this at the outset a little more.
Yeah, we're gonna have ownership of the key parts, and then ask our partners what they would like ownership in, and report to us, and ask us what they need and where they are with it, yeah. A lot of people who wanna make, what's the tagline we got? A lot of people wanna make.
Now's the time.
Aggress, well, a great place to live.
A great place to live.
Yeah.
Most livable city in Maine.
There.
Business friend.
Most livable and business-friendly city in Maine, most livable and connected, business-friendly city. Most livable and connected, and best transportation.
Talk to your wife about that.
Stop it.
It is important to me that too, there is a level of, and I've seen these strategy plannings fail.
It's really long.
Many, many times over, um, because it gets, the higher levels of traction you go back to, and then back to the task, and back to the higher, and there is a level of, let's do the work, let's get these things done.
And I think that's where the question, why, if we get off onto a bizarre conversation, why are we having this conversation? What is our objective? What's our goal? Oh, we kind of went down a rabbit hole.
And getting back to like, to the fun stuff, that's aligned with our vision, like, that is, that is the piece of this. Hey, the thriving communities, this is what it's gonna be, it's a massive training investment, and it's aligned with these bigger priorities and vision, and to you on that.
But you also want the task to be meaningful, you don't wanna be doing a bunch of tasks because they're on a list.
Well, that's the, what's the objective, yeah, why, why am I getting out of bed? Why am I showing up at work? Why are we here?
Yeah.
One thing I heard tonight is somewhere in these workshops, we need a refresher on the Village Partnership Initiative and the thriving communities of what they are, who's funding them, what are we doing? What's the outcome we're looking for?
Yeah.
What's the geography they cover? And there may be documents you can just share with us, and it doesn't have to be a presentation, but I don't know that I've seen documents of what they are.
Yeah, let's tag that for maybe September workshop, um, cause we're gonna have, it's all right, we're good, we're good. Twi- Twi'ala and I just talked about that today, she just put together an agenda, um, and after August fourteenth, we'll have, we have already done that with the VPI, we'll have enough information from our state, and we can give you all a, kind of a quick tour of, um, what those things are. And it's part of this process too, to your point, Michelle, and it's just not, you're seeing it for the first time in a council meeting, you move forward, maybe whatever councillor asked for it, maybe it's a staff thing they've had to move forward, maybe it's a community during things, so it's like, oh, okay, I know what the VPI is, I know what the thriving communities piece is.
I know why we're doing it.
I know why we're doing it, now it's connected, now it's gonna make Ellsworth the most livable city in Maine.
There we go.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
It's a workshop, so we don't need any motions.
I'm gonna leave.
Me too.
Motion to the door.
I am, I am going to make my own motion to the door.